Addition of our county commissioners. We will begin, as is the case in all meetings, with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. And please rise for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which extends one nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Donna, any hands raised for public comment? Okay, then we'll proceed with the agenda and seek for approval of the minutes of our last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting as printed.
Now second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of our September 17th meeting. Any comment or question regarding that motion, additions, deletions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved. Thank you. We'll talk to our treasurer's report with Sally Nguyen.
I don't think we have her on at the moment.
Oh, well.
Is someone available in place of her? No?
We can move on to and catch up later.
Yeah, she'll have bond payments then as well, which she she's the one that has those, so.
Yep, yep.
Was that her?
She's trying to get in. I just got an email from her. Let's go to, let's just go ahead, if you don't mind, and do the personnel and we'll.
Yep. Okay, Michelle, welcome, and you may proceed when you're ready, as soon as you unmute. There you go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Under resignations and terminations, Janet Ross, adult abuse investigator, resignation with a date correction of September 17th. Tanya Kip, property appraiser, resignation effective October 30th. Eola Hostetter, court officer, resignation effective November 30th. Sarah Mead, full-time correctional officer, resignation effective September 10th. Shane Naus, full-time correctional officer, resignation effective October 9th. Gabriel Cale, general clerk C, resignation effective September 21st. Jose Cologne, full-time correctional officer, termination effective September 19th. Jessica Menzel, fiscal technician, termination effective September 24th. And Dennis Firestone, purchasing agent, retirement effective December 24th.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignations and terminations with a special shout out to both Tanya Kip for 17 years of assessment service as a property appraiser and Dennis Firestone as our purchasing agent.
I'll second the motion with the same appreciate notes of appreciation.
Very good. We have a motion and a second with some comments for longevity recognition. Any further comment on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Under changes of status, transfers, and promotions, I have a motion to approve President Judge Tillwalk's recommendation to eliminate the two part-time DJ clerk positions within MDJ Dissinger's office to create one full-time position with benefits within the MDJ Dissinger's office at a grade five on the non-union salary chart effective October 5th, 2020.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved President Tillwalk's request. Any comment or question on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so ordered.
Tia Althouse is a change of status from part-time DJ clerk at a MDJ Dissinger's office to full-time DJ clerk at MDJ Dissinger's office at the rate of $793.31 by weekly effective October 5th. John Ryder, promotion from juvenile probation officer one at probation services to juvenile probation officer two at the rate of $1,895.36 by weekly effective October 5th. Christine Mundis, promotion from clerk typist A at probation services to probation aide at the rate of $1,001.90 by weekly effective October 5th. And Sonya Wright, change of status from full-time developmental assistant at Renova to casual call developmental assistant. No change in her rate effective October 18th.
I'll move to approve those changes of status and promotions.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to take care of those transactions. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Under other transactions, President Judge Tillwalk would like to hire Nicholas Foner as a law clerk at the rate of $1,414.86 by weekly effective October 19th. And the prison would like to hire the following three full-time correctional officers, all at the rate of $15.45 per hour, all effective October 12th. And that is Bradley Graybill, Jose Brag, excuse me, Hayden Murphy.
Make a motion.
Sorry.
A motion to approve those hirings.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve those transactions. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, so moved. Thank you.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following. Barbara Sikovic, longevity payment, full-time correctional officer at the prison, a one-time payment of $2,000 effective November 5th. And Richard Miller, incremental increase, full-time correctional officer at the prison, to the rate of $17.01 effective November 1st.
All moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve those salary board recommendations. Question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved. Thank you, Michelle. Morning, Leanne.
Morning.
Introduce yourself and then you may proceed.
Leanne Shank, human resources assistant. Under mandated conference seminars, I have one retro training request for Danielle Gray, Rhonda Shope, and Matthew Muffo from MHI DEI, attended the CPR and first aid training in Lebanon on September 4th. $135 total registration fee with mileage reimbursement mandated by Oxtail.
I'll some move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve retroactively that conference. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Under requested conference seminars, I have Sarah Gill from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the Pennsylvania notary training. This is an online course, $381 total registration fee with no other reimbursements.
Make a motion to approve that requested conference attendance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that area agency on agents, agency on aging request. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
And Adrian Laser from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the professional development services in Lebanon on October 15th, the 22nd, the 29th, and November 5th. This is a $300 total registration fee with parking reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that area agency on aging report or request. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leanne. Appreciate it. Now I see that our. Yeah, she is Madam Treasurer here with us. We'll now introduce Sally Nguyen for the treasurer's report. Unmute, please.
Yep, there I am. Okay, we had receipts on 9/29 and 9/30 of $196,481.24. That brought us to a cash balance of $3,194,494.20. Our expenditures this week were $2,446,080.20. Our undistributed tax claim was $7,784.82. That leaves us a balance of $740,629.18.
Make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve treasurer Nguyen's report. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Hey, Jamie, do you want to do these bond payments now?
Yes.
Okay, I do not have that Wells Fargo information. I do have the eight, but I don't have the six. I have what it would have been last year, possibly.
Okay.
You know, about what it was.
Let's use that number. It's kind of, it's, you know, we use that number and correct it if need be, but it's going to be very close, if not the same.
Okay, alrighty, so.
And you're waiting on that from Wells Fargo, correct?
Yes, I'm supposed to get it this morning, but of course I haven't received it yet, so. And you should be getting a statement in the mail from them after today sometime. They only run the invoices at midnight on the first. So I need a motion to approve the payment of a general obligation note, series 206, for the bank loan at Wells Fargo and should be approximately $6,176.
I'll make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo payment as adjusted when you get the actual number.
Okay, thank you.
So moved, or second, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve that expenditure for Wells Fargo. Any question or comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Okay, then I need a motion for the general obligation, obligation note for 2008 bank loan at Wells Fargo. And that will be around $359,548.
I make a motion to approve that payment to Wells Fargo for the 2008 loan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that payment to Wells Fargo. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Okay, then I need a motion for our general obligation bond, series 2016. This is at Fulton Bank, Fulton Financial, and that amount is $21,860.
I'll make a motion to approve the Fulton Financial payment of $21,860.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve that dispersment. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Okay, then we have the general obligation bond with Fulton Financial. Which year is this? Okay, it would be $1,056,118. And that one would be for. Oh, that's not the right amount. Oh, that's for the loan at Fulton Bank, so that's what that's for.
And what year was that loan, Sally?
Uh, I'm not sure when we took it out. It's just a loan.
Okay.
So you need a motion to make a loan payment, is that what it is?
Yes.
To Fulton Bank for $1 million?
$56,118.
So.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second to approve that payment to Fulton Financial. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
And then we have our series 2017 general obligation bond, and that payment is $141,025.
And who is that with Sally?
That's Fulton Financial.
I'll make that motion to pay the $141,025 payment to Fulton Financial.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay that 2017 issue. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Okay, then we have, I think I missed this one, the 2015 A general obligation bond for Fulton Financial. And that's $891,677.25.
I make a motion to pay the obligation to Fulton Financial for the 2015 A loan as read.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor to pay that obligation, general obligation bond payment. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
All right, I do have the amount, I think, for the 2008 Wells Fargo, because that was in that information Jamie we got yesterday.
Okay.
So actually, that 2008, let me see.
We did 2006 and 2008, you thought 2006?
It would be $365,640.66. So that would be, that was the one for the series 2008 bank loan at Wells Fargo.
Well, are we, are we good with it? We did, I think.
I mean, you can let it the way it is. We could just correct it when I actually get the official invoice.
I guess I'm asking, I think it might have been included in the motion that we would adjust as.
So we can just let that go then until we get the invoice.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Sally?
No, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. We'll move on to, we'll bring in Holly Lahey.
And you have a packet of Holly's contract, provider contract amendments for 2019, 2020, and 2021. There she is.
Good morning. My name is Holly Lahey, administrator for Lebanon County Mental Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program. This morning, I am presenting on two different contract amendment fiscal years for your consideration. The first is for fiscal year 2019, 2020, contract amendments for providers. There are 16 amendments in total, and the largest being $15,004 for developmental and disability services for more consumers needing services. And then the other being for Wells Van Philhaven in the amount of $71,368 to cover inpatient hospitalizations. The total contract changes equal $144,155. These contract changes will be covered through our current block grant funds, so we would not be seeking any additional funds from the county to cover those contract amendments.
Make a motion to approve the contract amendments for a total of $144,155.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve those 2019 and 2020 provider contract amendments. Any discussion? Any questions for Holly? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Thank you. The second would be contract amendments for fiscal year 2020, 21. There are nine contract amendments in total, the two largest being a new provider. We Talk Speech and Language Services at $15,056. The second being Community Services Group for $28,890. And this is for a new service that was previously covered under Health Choices Reinvestment. The total contract changes equals $76,591. Again, these contract amendments would be covered through our block grant funds, and we would not be seeking any additional county funds to cover the contract amendments.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the contract changes for 2021 as, as read.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve those contract amendments. Any comment or question? Only that it's nice to have the block grant opportunity to move money where it's needed like that. That's very good for, you know, our ability to operate more efficiently. Anything else? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved. Anything else, Holly?
No, that's all for today. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Jen Snyder up next from DVI. She's there. She needs to unmute.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jennifer.
How are you?
Doing very well, thank you. Welcome to our meeting, and we do have a proclamation for you this morning. Do you have any opening comments, or should we go right to it?
Um, no, just, you know, I want to thank you for doing this proclamation again for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I think it's really important to acknowledge the month where we, not only do we mourn for those who lost their life to domestic violence, but we also come together to help those victims who are still struggling. So thank you so much for this opportunity and for, you know, doing the proclamation for domestic violence.
You're very welcome. Jamie, would you like to do the reading?
Sure. Whereas "The crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security, and humanity due to systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, including abuse to children and the elderly." "And whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people but cut across all economic, racial, and societal barriers and are supported by societal indifferences. "And whereas, the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole here in this community, throughout the United States and the world. "And whereas, it is survivors themselves who have been in the forefront of efforts to bring peace and equality to the home. "And now therefore, we, the commissioners of Lebanon County, in recognition of the important work done by domestic violence programs, "do hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Lebanon County "and urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs to work toward improving victim safety "and holding perpetrators of domestic abuse accountable for their actions against victims in our society as a whole."
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation as read, and I will have a question.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion, a second on the floor, and a question first before we vote.
Yes, Jennifer, with the isolation that goes on in relation to the pandemic, have you noticed any increase in your need for services?
Unfortunately, no, which is kind of a scary, a scary situation, because we all know it's happening during. We're seeing a little bit of an increase now, since some things have lightened up and more, you know, more things are open. But initially, in the beginning, no, we've not seen an increase.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jennifer, any other comments before we adopt this motion?
No, just again, thank you so much for doing this.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the proclamation as presented. With nothing else to discuss, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved. We do appreciate all your good work on behalf of our residents, Jennifer, especially during this difficult time with the COVID-19 issues.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Right, we're running just a few minutes ahead of schedule, but the next item on the agenda, we do have the participants here, so we could move on to that, being Audrey Raco and John Shot for a grant regarding regarding body worn cameras. So I'm going to bring them in. Mr. Chairman, are you all right with that?
I'm good.
All right.
There we are. Good morning.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning, Audrey.
John, are you with us?
He has it on mute.
John, please unmute and we'll.
There we go.
Here we are, John. Good morning.
Hey, I see that my camera isn't working. I'm not sure why that is.
Well, something's our blessing, John.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, I'm not upset if I can't see myself on, I get self-conscious about it anyway, but I'm trying to hold camera, so.
All right. We can hear you loud and clear.
Okay.
If we want to proceed to Audrey with the.
Yes. Audrey Raco, Director of Probation Services, and I'm with John Shot, who is our grant coordinator. And we are here this morning to pursue permission to apply for a grant that would help to fund body cameras for our field staff for both juvenile and adult units. And John, we'll get into the specifics of the grant application with you, and then if you have any questions, I will gladly follow up.
Yes, good morning, everybody. And I assume everyone can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Well, as Audrey said, we're here to pass authorization to submit the application to PCCD for the body worn cameras, because we believe that those cameras are essential to time when, you know, the interaction between law enforcement and members of the public has fallen under heavy scrutiny. And this would be federal funding for the purchase of 27 camera and units for adult and juvenile probation officers. And that also includes the recharging stations, licensing fees, warranty and replacement, replacement parts, which come under the warranty protection. But now, like many of the applications that we submit, this one does require a 50% match with a cap of $2,000 in federal grant funding for each camera system. We are confident, we, the probation services, that we can meet this dollar-for-dollar match by using Act 35 Supervision Fee Funding that would not require expenditures from the county general fund. The document that I submitted to the commissioners the other day is a working draft of the budget component. The application for this particular deadline is not until October 15th. So between now and then, we'll continue to work on the application, updating the budget narratives and other sections of the application. So what we're doing is we're requesting your authorization to file a completed application with the commission by October 15th in an amount not to exceed $100,000 in combined federal and local match funding. These applications will be reviewed by the commission and brought before the commission board at their December meeting with the grant cycle beginning January 1st and ending on September 30th, 2022. So it is actually a 21-month federal grant cycle.
Okay, I'll make a motion to allow the probation department to move forward with that grant request.
Second the motion.
We have a second that, and with the assumption that the supervision fund will pick up the match. That's contemplated, right, at this point?
Yes.
So any further discussion? 27 body worn cameras?
Question. Question, Mr. Chairman, is that right?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Audrey, what, there's a lot of, there are a lot of differences between departments about policies regarding when the cameras are on, when they're not, when they're worn, that sort of thing. What's, what's guiding you in terms of your internal policy? Do you have a, one that you're modeling after in terms of, you know, requirements and procedures?
So, so typically, when we.
So, so typically, when we incorporate something like this and we start on the development of a policy, we'll gather policies from various agencies and review them. We will put suggestions together and then present them to the President Judge, and it's his final approval.
Could I ask that as part of that process, you work with our insurance carriers' risk control department, loss control? Because, you know, these do result often in either making or breaking cases if there's a, if there's litigation. And, you know, the other counties have already been through this and have already had policies that they may have reviewed and might provide some, some good input.
Absolutely, absolutely. Would the contact be Keith?
Yep.
Okay.
You got it.
Okay, motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, so moved. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, still a little bit ahead, but Bob Dowd is there and. Bring him over for the hazmat grant.
Okay, hope he can work his camera. There you go, Robert.
Now we're getting there.
We betcha. All right, would you like to introduce yourself and then you can proceed with your presentation?
Certainly. My name is Bob Dowd. I am the Director of the Department of Emergency Services. And I'm here this morning asking the Commissioners to apply for, allow us to apply for the Annual Hazardous Materials Response Fund Grant in the amount of $16,633. The grant this year would be used towards equipping and deploying a drone program for the hazmat team.
I'll make a motion to approve a hazmat grant application, a process for Department of Emergency Services for drones.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor as presented by Mr. Dowd. Jamie has an observation or question?
Same, same comment, but I know that, same comment in terms of working with our risk control folks at PCorp. However, I'm aware that Director Dowd has already done that. I think Keith from our, from our Pennsylvania County Risk Pool has sat down with you already, Bob, and this goes back some time ago when you were even considering this to go over their policies. And they've spent an inordinate amount of time on this because a lot of counties and sheriff's departments and so on have obtained these, and there is, there is some liability with them, obviously, when you've got a device in the air being controlled, so on.
Yes, I did sit down and meet with him before we even started to pull this program together. And one of the big takeaways was making sure we comply with all of the laws. And the task force has put together a, basically a drone working group between the eight counties, nine counties now. And we're all following the exact same set of rules, and we're using this vetted program to make sure that we fly within legal parameters. And it uses our county's mutual aid agreements between each other to cover us from a liability standpoint, too.
Excellent.
And we will continue to have those conversations as the program develops.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor for the $16,633 expenditure toward these drones and as requested by Gary Verna. Any additional questions or comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, so moved. Robert, you?
Thank you. Thanks, Bob.
Joe, Ellen, yes?
Yes, I see we have a question from an observer. Is there a timeline for when the paperwork will be signed for the Marcellus Shale Grants to allow us to begin our projects? I, I know it's been a busy time. Jamie, did they go out yet?
The, the grant agreements?
Yes.
I believe, well, I'm not sure then, since Pam's asking about it. I can check with planning and see if they've, they've been sent out, but essentially, once they're sent, they're sent out, they come back, we sign them, then they're good to go.
Yeah, we've signed a couple, so.
Yeah, some will be coming back.
I was going to say, I felt like some of them were, were out there for signature already, so should be closed. Dawn, do you know if, the one for Coleman Park, do you know the status on that one?
No.
Okay.
Pam has, says they got the agreements, but they have to be signed by Commissioners before we can start the project. So, she has to return them to us so we can sign them. Maybe she missed it.
And if she did do that, then they may just be in between here and there. I don't know what the timing was on.
Okay, Pam, did you send them in back so we can sign them? After you signed them? Yes.
Okay.
So, maybe we got to track those down.
Okay.
Check on that. Yeah, the process is underway. Okay, thank you. So, we're moving on to the.
Yeah, I, one of the stuff I have with it, so all right.
Yep, Jamie, we're good with that, yeah.
And I am bringing Tom Long, our Assistant Solicitor, into the meeting. Dawn, that numerical ID, that might be Tom. That 164271. Tom, can you raise your hand? Well, we can. Tom, is that you?
Unmute, please.
Tom, if you're 164271, they need you to unmute.
He's doing it from his iPad.
There we go. Am I in?
Yeah.
You're in.
All right, great.
Good morning.
I brought, asked Tom to, to join us here because while we had our solicitor busy with some CARES Act stuff, and while we were working on various property acquisitions and the sale here, I'll talk about in a minute. I had asked Tom, as our Assistant Solicitor, with decades of experience in this field, if he would take on this task to, to help us in our negotiations and the preparation of sales agreements and so on on a couple of different properties. I'm going to, before the, before I get to the ones that, that Tom assisted on, I want to just quickly get through two agreements that, that are, that you're familiar with, that have been sort of longstanding here and actually are agreements that Dave Warner, our Solicitor, has been working with us on. And that, those two agreements are in relation to the property adjacent to and behind the Driver Center in Lebanon on East Cumberland and Old Cumberland Streets. If you'll recall, for a few years now, we've been entertaining a sales agreement with BT Management from Altoona for four acres adjacent to the Driver Center on the bend where Walnut Street, where 22 East and Walnut Street make the bend onto old East Cumberland. And that is coming to a close now. We are ready to settle on that property, that 200, or I'm sorry, that, that four acres. However, we had to subdivide that land off of the main 13-acre parcel. That's being done right now and is, should be before the South Lebanon Township Supervisors to approve that subdivision shortly. But in the meantime, I just needed a couple more months to get to settlement on that. Originally, I think we were to settle by September 30th. Looks like it'll probably be by the end of November that we can get to that. So, this first, the first item I'm asking you is an amendment to our agreement of sale, no extension to the, no additional funds or anything. We've requested this extension to get, to give us a little bit more time on the subdivision. So, but this would be the Fifth Amendment to the agreement of sale. And I gave you a copy of that, and that'll just take us to the end of November, and then we'll have closing.
Motion for the extension?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion, a second to extend the agreement of sale. Further comment? Jamie, any further clarification? We good?
Nope. Good.
All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Both same signs, so moved.
Okay, then also related to that property, the same buyer, BT Management of Altoona, expressed interest the last couple of months in additional approximately two and a half acres of that parcel that would be directly behind the Driver Center. So, we turned the four acres that they, that they're purchasing through that prior agreement into sort of an L shape that wraps around the back of the Driver Center. We have an agreed upon price of $100,000 per acre. For that additional land, this is two and a half acre parcel, so $250,000 is the sales agreement for that, for that piece of ground. That would not be settled at the same time. This will be on its, on its own schedule since this would be a brand new, you know, it's attached to, but a brand new agreement. And the provisions of the sales agreement would be $250,000. $5,000 would be paid on the, on the signature of the agreement. Buyer may extend up to two additional six-month periods for a cost of $5,000 for each of those extensions, which would be applied to the purchase price. If anything is needed beyond that, we would need to renegotiate that as part of an amendment to the settlement. These terms are very similar to the ones that we had for the original agreement with him, which then were later extended for additional, additional purchase, in addition to the purchase price on that other parcel. But anyway, this is for the two and a half acres adjacent to the four, behind the Driver Center, $100,000 per acre, $250,000 total. If you agree to this and we go to settlement on this parcel, that will still leave approximately seven or eight acres of land that is behind the Driver Center, the Armory, Steiner, Steiner Auto, and just to the, it would be adjacent to, to the, to the west of the fire school. So, that'll still remain county owned land.
I'll make a motion to approve a new sales agreement with BT Management for an additional two and one half acres at the cost of $100,000 per acre for a total of $250,000.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. We approved that agreement of sale. Any comment or question or more discussion needed? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same signs, so moved.
Okay. The next item I have deserves a little bit of history, and that is the property known as Camp Shan, which is in Cornwall Borough along Route 322, right between 322 and the Lancaster County line. Just to put you in the neighborhood of Spring Hill Acres area is, is just to the west of it. Boyd Street comes out onto 322 from Cornwall, right in the same vicinity where Camp Shan is located. Camp Shan is owned by the Lancaster YMCA. For those who remember, at one time was Camp Kuanis, back, I think in the 1980s, was run by the Lebanon Y. It was then acquired by Lancaster YMCA. Anybody jump in and correct me here if I'm getting any of this wrong. But, so Lancaster Y became the property owner of Camp Shan. They have operated it as a youth camp for all of these years. Recently, earlier this year, the Lancaster YMCA decided that they are going to need to divest of Camp Shan. They were, I want to say, just sort of reshuffling their portfolio of properties. And this one was no longer going to fit into their portfolio. They have some other locations that they were, their actual YMCA satellite locations in Holland, in addition to the one in Lancaster City that they maintain. And there was concern that if this property were put onto the market, that it may not be retained and continue in its form as it's had for such a long time. So, the Lebanon YMCA approached the county to see if the county would be willing or interested at all in purchasing Camp Shan, and the Lebanon YMCA would operate Camp Shan. So, this would be a similar arrangement to the Lebanon Valley Rail Trail. So, you have owned the Lebanon Valley Rail Trail, you own every foot of it. However, the management of it is done by the Lebanon Valley Rail Trail Group by agreement. The same would be the case with the Lebanon YMCA. I gave a little bit of a history behind the property. The YMCA provided you, Phil Tipton provided you with a summary that, that they would be interested in forming a long-term agreement with the county for the purpose of continuing to offer the camping experience and outdoor programming for the youth and families of Lebanon County. The long-range goal would be that they would utilize their endowment fund and seek additional contributions to that endowment fund to help support the ongoing upkeep and maintenance of the property. They believe they have multiple opportunities for individuals and businesses who may be willing to support that and also seeking naming rights to the property for, in exchange for, for financial support. That's, essentially, that's the background I have for you now. We've, we've gone back and forth with the Lancaster YMCA. We, at this point, have an agreed upon price of $725,000. And would hope to go to settlement before the, the end of November. From the county's financial perspective, we would be utilizing capital funds that are on hand to purchase this asset, and it would be maintained as a county asset run by the Lebanon Y. Tom, I would ask if you have anything there to add that I may have missed. This one's pretty straightforward. Anything?
No, I don't really have anything to add. I think you covered it all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, William, go ahead.
I, I'm, I'm willing to make a motion to complete this transaction, but I do have a question. We had some early discussions about additional protection for land preservation. And I was just curious to know if we've made any progress in that respect.
Thank you, I did forget that. About, I think.
Do you want a second so we can discuss that, or did you make a motion?
I said, I'll, I'll make the motion, yes.
And I'll second it. I'm sorry, Jamie, I wanted to make sure we, I didn't forget we were in the motion.
Fine. Tom, do you, do you recall how much of the land at this point is already under protection with federal lands because of the?
66.9 acres.
Yep, she's right.
So, 66 acres of this, and what's the total parcel?
120.
120.
20, okay. So, I was going to say half, I wanted to make sure. So, literally, half of this is already under protection. And yes, as Commissioner Ames stated, we had talked about adding it into, you know, perpetuity, into protection with, with the conservancy or some form of preservation. Commissioner, that's still the plan, and if there's a sales agreement that's, that's, would be, once we begin to control the property, then we can pursue that with, with whichever party might be willing. I know that, that during the period that this property became available, there was some interest by a conservancy to acquire the property in order to preserve it. However, when they learned of the county's interest at the, in the property, they, they were perfectly fine with that, not, you know, not being in competition with the county to buy the property. And I'm not sure that they had identified funds for it at that time either yet. So, so not only there's, there was interest in it, there still is, and yes, we, we would pursue that. I'd just have to work with, probably with the Conservation District to identify someone.
Either the farm preservation program or, as you say, as a backup to conservancy. But I'd like to get us over the $20,000 for farm preservation.
Yes, we're very close to that, so this would be a big help in that regard. The only other thing I wanted to say was that this is consistent with our quality of life efforts on behalf of our citizens. It's a perfect fit for tying in with rail trail, as Jamie mentioned, and Governor Dick and some other municipal parks throughout our county and, you know, related amenities. So, I think it's a, it's a good fit and it has a good partnership opportunity there with the Y and also for getting our continuous as a, probably the top in class five in the state in terms of land preservation. So, there's a lot of good things to go with it. Commissioner Litz?
Yes, I'd also like to comment, please. I know that some people were upset when we looked to sell the land on the east end of the county, and that was maybe 14 acres or somewhere in that vicinity. So, this one is much larger and. So this one is much larger and we're making strides to preserve a much larger parcel than what we sold. A. And B, as you said, Commissioner, this is a seven generation project that I just really believe in. So this is going to be there for children, grandchildren and unborn generations. And I just think it's a fantastic opportunity. I want to thank the YMCA for approaching us. And I look forward to a good working relationship with them for many years to come.
Anything else before we vote? If not, all in favor of motion to acquire Camp Shan, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved. Okay.
All right. Then the next one I have for you, this series Property Day.
Yeah.
The next one I have for you relates to the county's intention of acquiring land and constructing a new 911 center, which is something we've been talking about for years now. Sort of coming to fruition here. We had a little bit of a delay through COVID.
Jamie, I don't want to interrupt you, but I am going to. Sorry about that. I see Laura LeBeau has.
Oh.
Is that on?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
That could be on what we've already discussed, so I maybe bring her in.
Thank you. Commissioner, thank you. I appreciate that. I did. I just want to be clear on this Camp Shan purchase. And I I think I agree with Commissioner Litz's comments. It's a fantastic idea for generations unborn yet. So I just want to understand the financial arrangements. So what the the Lebanon Y is asking the county to pay the 750,000 and they will manage the land? Is am I understanding that right?
It's 725.
What's that? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
But yeah, but we would use county money to buy it from the Lancaster Y. And then the Lebanon Valley Family YMCA would be the the managers of Camp Shan?
Yep.
And is it is it their intention that this would be a public use? You know, the Y being a membership only type organization for a lot of their facilities? Would this be open to the general public or would this be for the the Y members?
They give scholarships to children that can't afford camp, Laura. So I think your answer is yes, but there is an application process for those who are not able to be members or afford the camp.
So it's it's still going to be run as some sort of a like an overnight camp experience or how the types of programs that they do?
Yes.
Yes, and it's also used by the school districts of Lebanon County as well. So all those relationships were are intended to continue.
If I could, I could, I could read a couple of lines from from a summary that Phil Tipton provide in terms of their intentions. He states here that we plan to work with school districts and provide outdoor educational opportunities as well as businesses and churches to provide team building activities. The opportunity of serving more families and impacting a greater number of youth in Lebanon County. Our mission will be to raise annual support for the work we do at the Y camp, do at Y camp. Each year, the Y reaches out to the community for funds to help us in subsidizing programs for families who may face financial hardship. Lebanon Valley YMCA turns no one away for the inability to pay. We work with every family so that they can participate in Y programs. We can only do this with a generous support of businesses and individuals in the community. So I hope that maybe adds a little to that.
Well, when Phil is when Phil is talking about the the Y's endowment, where does that come into play? It doesn't sound like they're they're putting up any money.
The campus ships and the upkeep of the property.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
The the involvement I see of the county going forward is the ownership. The essentially, the the protection or the insurance, you know, the insuring of of the structures that are that are there, that'll have to be done jointly with the YMCA because they'll have liability, we'll have property to cover. And, you know, potentially, if the county commissioners consider any sort of annual support level, I mean, that that exists right now for Governor Dick or Coleman Park and some others. So I I don't want to, I'm not I'm not promising anything in that regard. I'm just making a comparison to that. There is some support, some level of support in those to other recreational activities. But I I don't think we've crossed that bridge.
Okay.
You know, this this camp has a rich past. I think it actually goes back to the 40s when Bethlem Steel and the Kiwanians got together. And that's how it became Camp Kiwanis back in that era. It's been back and forth with ownership. And this was our opportunity to solidify that forever and preserve that as, you know, a good, healthy outlet for our citizens. Think this this marriage is a good one. And we look forward to working out all the details. But we we did want to have the ownership here instead of having it owned by an entity outside Lebanon County. Just this makes sense for the timing today. Commissioner Litz.
Yes, I just want to add that many years ago, the county missed an opportunity to acquire the rail trail. We don't want to be in that position. This is an opportunity, one worth pursuing. And again, what we all said before, it's it's just a great marriage with the YMCA operating it.
To clarify what you're referring to, Commissioner, I think many years before the county, you know, for the ownership now, there was an opportunity to buy a large part of what was the rail line then. And it was passed over at that time. And of course, we're not where we are, but I think that's what you meant. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So thank you, Laura. Now we'll move on to the next agreement.
Okay, so again, we've been working at a at a construction of a new 911 center for for quite a while now. The first part of that is is to develop a concept of what the building needs to be and how's and function and so on, which leads to then what kind of parcel and where the location of the parcel of land needs to be. And we did an extensive search. We ultimately considered about 10 different properties throughout the county and with a lot of criteria, manmade hazards, natural hazards nearby, access to technology, access to services. So there was a multi-page, you know, vetting that we did with all sorts of issues to be determined good or bad for the location of facility. And we finally agreed on or have identified a parcel. And this is a two part approval that I'll be asking you for on this. One is a resolution, the other is an agreement of sale. But the parcel is is located along Cornwall Road directly across from Stony Bridge Landscaping. It is recently, there was a bank. There was the a funeral home and an office complex built adjacent to it on Cornwall Road and a traffic light was installed. So this is just to the to the south of that. It is on land owned by Richard and Carol Kreider. And what we are hoping to do is purchase a 10.45 acre parcel of land that we can place our our 911 center and hazmat facility and Department of Emergency Services Administration building upon. Before we get to the agreement of sale and and the the agreed upon price for the parcel is $120,000 per acre for 10.45 acres. That comes to just just short of 1.3 million for this property. You have actually a board before you had borrowed funds to construct a backup facility for 911, which never came to fruition. Those funds and proceeds are still on hand. So in order to purchase this property, we would simply utilize those funds that were borrowed for the purpose of 911. And there are approximately $900,000 left in that fund. And so you would need another another 400,000 from from capital toward this. But this particular part of the project would not be would not be newly borrowed funds. You have essentially have most of this on hand, in hand, to do the acquisition. Beyond that, this will be a borrowed project. We talked a little about the county's the county's debt service and where we stand with that right now. We are in a, and I would say, a very good position, particularly relative to some other counties. The county with an annual budget of $85 million has about, after today's debt service payments, probably about $14 million in total principal, which is which is a very, very good position to be in. And that was acknowledged in our in our bond rating from Standard and Poor's earlier this year and and so on. So you have a lot of capacity to borrow. It's not something this county does very often, but without question, this will be the largest project the county will have undertaken cost wise. The technology that is involved, the type of construction that a building like this is built is built with is expensive. There's no question about it. It is right in the neighborhood of the of the facility of a jail or the building of a jail or the building of a hospital. There are redundant systems. It is a hardened facility. So this will be an expensive facility. There's no question. However, yeah, first thing to do is to get is get a property acquired. The first thing we're asking you is to adopt a resolution for the acquisition of the land in lieu of condemnation. Essentially, this is stating that this facility is for the purposes of public safety, safety of the community, et cetera, and that if you were not able to to acquire this land through a sales agreement, which you were, if you were not able to, this resolution is saying that you would be willing or would have been willing to do it via condemnation procedures. Again, that is not the case at this point because we have a an arms length agreement with the seller with the price that both parties have agreed upon. So this is a straight sale, just as you would, you know, to to agreeable parties. But I am asking that resolution to be adopted. This is on the recommendation of our solicitor. And that was part of the negotiation in order to to resolve some of the the extra costs that are typically involved with the transaction. If it's done in lieu of condemnation, we all realize some savings there. So let's for that resolution. Tom, anything to add to that? You were you were instrumental in researching that and coming up with the wording.
Yes, I think that's the appropriate way to approach it. And hopefully it'll work out. I'm pretty sure that we can get an agreement signed forthwith.
All right.
All right. Seek a motion?
This is a motion on the resolution.
Yep.
I'll make the motion to adopt a resolution to, what's the language?
In lieu of condemnation.
In lieu of condemnation. Thank you.
I'll second the motion. And I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, Tom, can we, I don't, I keep looking for the words in lieu of condemnation in the agreement. Can you point that out to me, please?
In, I don't think that those words are in the agreement.
That's a separate resolution.
Could they? Could they be in the heading or in the resolution somewhere?
We can.
Can we amend the motion to include those words in the resolution?
No, wait. No, the words in lieu, I I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question. No, we're not putting in the resolution in lieu of. We're putting the resolution is to authorize condemnation. The agreement will be in lieu of, the agreement with the Kreiders itself will be in lieu of condemnation. It's just compensation.
Yeah. And that's right in the heading of the agreement of sale.
Okay, now I see it. I didn't see it on this one. It's on the other one. Okay. I just thought it needed to be there somewhere, but I do see it now. Thank you for pointing that out.
Sure.
All right, we have a motion and a and a second on the floor regarding this resolution. Any further comment or question? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
And the second item on that action or on on this parcel is the actual agreement of sale in lieu of condemnation. And and this would the terms would be, as I described, is a 10.45 acre parcel of land owned by Richard Kreider and Carol Kreider. This, it's actually part of an overall 30 acre parcel. It's the 10.45 is being subdivided. It's the it's the northernmost portion of the land. Purchase price, purchase price being $120,000 per acre. This agreement allows for the county to have 90 days from the date of the agreement to conduct a due diligence feasibility study of the parcel. If the county determines that it is not in the county's best interest to proceed, the agreement shall become null and void. I will add to that, we have done some, you know, pretty significant due diligence to this. I don't expect this to turn out to be anything but a usable parcel. That was part of our whole vetting of the other the other nine parcels that we had looked at. We feel very confident about this one. At the end of the 90 day due diligence period, if the county determines to proceed, it shall pay $50,000 applicable to the purchase price, but non refundable should the county not complete the transaction. Settlement shall occur within 21 days of the receipt of the county's necessary approvals and permits. If the county is unable to attain obtain those within eight months from that date, then there's an additional $50,000 due, which is also applicable to the purchase price. The rest talks about all legal costs and attorney's fees are be borne by the respective parties. So again, Tom, anything I may have missed on that?
No, I think that covers it.
Then I'll make a motion to purchase the 10.45 acre parcel from Richard and Carol Kreider. And that is at the cost of $120,000 per acre, I believe.
Correct.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor. As outlined in this agreement, we were committing to this land purchase. I do have one question or I'll entertain other questions first. Jamie, the roughly 400,000 that we're going to take from the capital fund. My understanding is that when we would go to market to to do the bond issue, that we could replenish that 400,000 into the capital fund. Is that from the proceeds of the bond issue?
The 400,000, I don't think we were planning on doing it that way.
Okay.
For any other, any other cost to the project going forward? If there's anything that you would you would lay out for, let's say, for design or or construction? I don't anticipate this, but if there were any, you're correct about those.
Okay.
Those those can be, but it takes a resolution in advance, I believe, to state that you intend to reimburse yourself from proceeds before doing that. So this one.
All right. My only, you know, it's nice to have a strong capital fund when you need it. And that was my only only thought there. Commissioner Litz?
I believe Laura LeBeau has her hand up again.
Okay.
Before we get to Laura, I just would add to you that that the, if it means anything, that the purse, the parcel that you're selling, the additional parcel that we acted upon earlier here to sell for $250,000. That's that's essentially windfall. The the other four acres we had planned on and accounted for, but that's a well windfall sale, so.
All right, I feel better. Thank you. Let's let's vote on the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, we have the motion is passed. Thank you, everyone. And now we'll bring Laura back in, Dawn, if she has some questions relative to this.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioners, just two quickies. And is this land, am I understanding and thinking back in my memory that this was the land that at one time Dick Kreider tried to sell to Walmart? that at one time Dick Kreider tried to sell to Walmart, you know, back in the early 2000s? Is this that plot of land?
Yes.
Or a piece of it?
Part of it.
It's a piece of it, yeah. It's gone through a number of different considerations, I guess. That, I think you're right, that was one. And in our research of the, for title, for taking title, it was also granted an option for, the name of the developer is slipping my mind.
Springwood.
Springwood developers had an option to purchase it also back in 2013, which expired. So there's been significant interest in this property over the years. But yeah, same one you're referring.
Okay. And when you mentioned, Jamie, that beyond the land acquisition, this would be the largest construction project to date for the county, can any of you just sort of ballpark, what kind of numbers are we talking about once you start building the buildings?
I guess I'm going to leave that one to the commissioners. They have seen some numbers. You know, we haven't done any borrowing on them yet. They're estimates based on current design. I guess I'm just not really sure how much.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I, at this point, we should be going there because this is the first step in this commitment, but there is discussion needed to get to a number that we would want to put out there.
I agree. I think that the number that was given was pie in the sky kind of numbers and then we have to see what we really need.
Okay, well, then let me just ask this. When, provided the land sale goes through, and I'm certain it will, when would you project possibly breaking ground on the buildings?
Boy, I'm going to say a year from now, Laura.
So we're still, we're still a ways off to getting this 911 center.
Yeah, we're two years away from a, you know, turnkey.
Operating center, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because in addition to the structure itself, it's also going to entail the radio system, 911 radio system, which is approaching 15, 16 years old, I think, now. So, you know, we've got some compliance issues we need to step up to on that, P-25 and some other, which Bob Dodd can explain a little better than I, but, yeah, we're going to be doing a replacement of the radio system.
Right.
Education system as well. So that's going to be parallel, so it'll be a little bit challenging and complicated to do these things at the same time, but we'll have to stand up both of those things at the same time, radio system and building. And the estimate for the building construction is a year, essentially.
This is another, I think, good day for generational commitment here, but this is in the area of public safety. This is going to carry us for generations ahead in terms of the highest technology that's available, you know, for our citizens. So it's another investment in that area for generations to come as well. So I think, you know, this is the first step in that process.
And I'd like to recognize and thank my colleagues. I've been lobbying for a new 911 center for many years and they've stepped up to the plate to make this commitment, so I want to say thank you publicly.
All right. We are moving on, Laura. Thank you. And where else are we going, Jamie, with?
I've just got two or three minor things here yet. Well, shouldn't say minor, just someone. Two or three smaller things here, and then I'll just touch on the CARES grants, which transpired yesterday, but I can just recap that real quickly for anyone who might be attending the meeting here. But first, I have a application for County Liquid Fuels Aid for Lebanon City, the amount of $25,477 that they intend to use for paving and general maintenance in the city.
Make a motion to approve the liquid fuels grant.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the request of the city for liquid fuels allocation and any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
I've got some exemption requests for disabled veterans from real estate taxes. I've got four of them. For your approval, Richard Hugel Jr. of Ridge Boulevard, Lebanon, Stacy Hubbard of Elizabeth Town Road, Palmyra, Dennis Klinger of Penrin Lane, Cornwall, and Larry Garloff II of Overlook Lane, Newmanston.
I'll make a motion to approve the four exemption requests for real estate taxes for these disabled veterans.
I'll second the motion.
The motion has been made and seconded in the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
I've got two invoices for your approval through the County CARES County Relief Block Grant. These are both toward the public relations costs for the CARES grants, and they are to Forever Media for $450 and Kaufman Creative Services for $3,000. Those are the ones that came in since your last meeting. So I will likely have these kinds of things at every one of your meetings.
Seek a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve payment of those, the two invoices as presented.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's moved and seconded that we approved those two invoices. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so moved.
Okay, and if it's all right with you, I'll just take a minute or two here to recap what took place yesterday afternoon in terms of CARES grants, and we'll also be getting a release out on this to inform everyone. Our Kaufman's already got something drafted and ready. Are we all right with that?
Yep, go ahead, Jamie.
So as you're all aware, the county received its $12.8 million. We identified originally about $7.25 million of that for grants to businesses, nonprofits, and tourism-related entities. We have since decided to up that utilizing some of the economic development funds that appear won't be utilized and shift them over, so we'll have a total of about $8.3 million for these grants. The first round opened up on September 1st, closed on September 15th. We received the first round of applications. We received 293 applications, very surprising level of interest, for a total request of We intend to have two rounds of this, and so we have a need to have some funds left over for the second round. In addition, there was a scoring rubric that you became very familiar with and applications were scored by way of a predetermined weight on things such as loss revenue year over year, unbudgeted COVID expenses that an entity may have incurred, number of employees, receipt of any other CARES Act funding that a business or entity might have received, and then a portion of the application was reviewed by a panel that you appointed, a five-member panel that you appointed at your last meeting to go through the narratives included in the application, which they did. Total scores were ranked. Applicants deemed not eligible were eliminated and applications scoring 45 points or higher were awarded a grant based on their request or the cap. Yesterday afternoon, you considered those and at what was typically a workshop, but yesterday was a voting session duly advertised as a voting session. So yesterday, you awarded those grants and the ones fitting the criteria that I just described, there were 202 grants that were awarded for a total of $5,693,671. Those recipients all received an email last evening. The list of recipients is being published on lebanoncountycares.com. That's the actual interface landing page that we established for this grant program. And there were a variety of reasons, variety of reasons that businesses were denied. Most were because their rubric score simply was below the cutoff of 45, or they did not require, or they did not include the required documentation, and a few were submitted late after the 4:00 PM cutoff on September 15th. All that said, there will be a second round. There will be approximately $2.5 million available in the second round. So anyone who missed the first round or is interested in reapplying, potentially to have their documentation corrected or with additional information, is welcome to do that. That round will open up on October 15th. Same process, same website, lebanoncountycares.com, and it will close on October 30th. And then we will strive to have awards of those grants on November 15th. So that's my summary of yesterday's action.
Very complete, very complete. Thank you. And we did yesterday a public meeting where we voted to adopt those or make those awards. We thanked vigorously the committee that put it all together and that spent so much time in doing such a really very competent professional job and very efficiently and in a very timely manner. So we were able to get these needed monies in the hands of the folks that have been suffering these past several months. So we did acknowledge that yesterday, but it should be reminded to our county that these folks did this in a, you know, short time in a very good way.
Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, yes. Pam was asking, will those not approve? Be advised as to why they were not approved? And the short answer is yes. They will be contacted and told why theirs was not approved. And so therefore, they will have, as Jamie suggested, an opportunity to correct it or improve upon the area that they were deficient in and resubmit.
Jamie, anything else?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Anything else for the good?
It was a lot.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn in a second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you all very much. Have a good rest of your day.